Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone. Glad you're here today.
We're so excited to have you here and we're excited to have Julie and Colin from my team here as well. Hey guys.
Good one everyone.
So today we are talking about how to attract brand partners to your young living business. As you're coming in, let us know where in the world you are. I am in Alabama today and will be through the holidays. Let us know what you are excited to learn about today. And of course, if you are here looking for help and support, go ahead and head over into the Q and A with your questions. If you're brand new, welcome. We are Get Oiling. We are a platform built by and for brand partners. Here to help you grow your young living business and to serve the Team YO community at large. We offer these free trainings every Thursday at noon Eastern US time, except for when there's a major holiday in the US. And typically even then, we send you a recording of something valuable. But we are excited to be here this week again to talk about how to attract brand partners to your business. We do have an entire platform that can serve your business, whether you're just getting started or you are a royal crown diamond or anywhere in between. And of course, today we're going to be talking about a little bit more high level concept and less into the tech. But we always tend to get questions and have opportunities to deep dive into the system. And if you want to learn more about the technical inner workings of our platform, we have tons of tutorials. We have long form videos on our YouTube channel. We do these live calls every week. And of course, we've got an incredible support team here to help you. So again, welcome. Head over into the chat. Let the community know you are here. We are always so very, very excited to have you. So we're going to pop out of video and get into some slides that I have prepared for you guys today. And then if you have questions, again, do please make sure that those get into the Q and A. I'm on a much smaller screen than I normally use and I'm going to have a hard time seeing any questions that you have as I am going through today's content. So let's, let's get into it here. Today, as promised, we're talking about how to attract brand partners to your team. Let me see a show of hands. How much would you love it to have people working with you who are excited about using and sharing and living product as you are? That's the dream, right? You want to find people of like mind that link together and, and share and get oils into every home. So today we are going to, first, we have an exciting new update. Greg has done something awesome again in our system. Greg created this platform and continues to make it better. And there is a new feature that you're going to want to check out as it pertains to pages on your site and in your member area. There are a few points I'm going to cover here with you today, the first being the number one key to attract brand partners. We'll talk about what it looks like to put yourself out there so that you're attracting them. We'll talk about the make or break factor in getting yourself out there and attracting your brand partners. We'll talk about the phenomenon that I like to call the brand partner generator. And then as always, we'll get into our life helping Q and A. Now, as I mentioned previously, this is a call that is wide open to anybody. And if you have questions, even if they have nothing to do with today's subject matter, you're welcome to come and add those to the Q and A now here on Zoom. And if you are watching us on our YouTube, sorry, on our YouTube channel as a replay or on our Facebook group where we stream when we're live, you can actually head over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and get a link to join this Zoom call. If you would like to join in with community here and get live support. And if you would like to take that a step further and work together one-on-one on a call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review and reserve space on an upcoming Thursday. And if you'd like a hand getting things done, you'd like for someone to do some of this stuff for you. You can go to getoiling.com/conceiers. Our team is incredibly gifted and are able to create the website, the member area, the automation function of your dreams. So feel free to reach out to them, get a quote, connect with them. They're lovely people and they do really great work. So I am actually going to pop out of these slides real quick and make Greg an admin because he needs to share something really exciting with you guys. So I'm going to pop that right over to you, Greg. Tell us about this new feature.
Sure. It looks like Zoom did an update and let's see if this works. We'll tell you about the new feature, hoping this works. One second here. Looking like I need to click a switch to make this happen. Got to love updates. Oh, great. It's making me restart Zoom. I'll be right back in one minute.
No worries. No worries. We're gonna, we're gonna chat real brief while, while we wait for Greg to come back. Have you guys ever done that? If you're, you're, you're about to get onto a call, you know, you're being smart, you're getting on maybe three, four, five minutes ahead of the time that the call starts and Zoom's like, haha, just kidding. You're not getting on this call. We are going to update you right now. I got that right before today's call and it looks like Greg is having to do something like that now. Let me see. Now I, I need to, just did it keep you a co-host Greg? Are you still?
It did not. Looks like I need to have that again.
Cool. Got you. All right. We should be good to go now.
Hey, it looks like it might be working now. Awesome. Okay. Hey, look at that. There's the screen. Got to love it when the tech works. Awesome. So yeah, the, the feature update is along the same lines as what we've been doing over the last several times. This is, I've been talking about this and so the number one, there's a new page template and I'll show you that in a little bit. But there's also a new page browser selector to make it a lot easier to find the page that you're looking for when you're creating a custom website. So when you click on pages here in the website menu and you go to add, previously this is just a big list different page templates kind of organized by name essentially. But now you can choose, you can find a page by the type of page, you know, like links page, sales page, about page landing pages, all these different categories as well as themes. So we have a few themes here where there's multiple pages that match each other. And except for no theme, that's just everything else. But you can see now, okay, these all go together. And then it also shows the page type and this little tag, if there is a page type associated with it, it will be there as well. So it makes it, I think, a lot easier to find and narrow down on what you're looking for. Like, oh, I need a links page to replace my, the one I'm using on Instagram or whatever. So you know, you can come in here and get a couple of templates. We hope to be adding to this over time. The, so, and also the funnel tab is still there. This opens up a resource bundle, which then allows you to pull in a complete funnel for the, complete funnel for these two anyway. And again, hoping to be adding to that in the future. The new page template here is a, it's not this one. It's the coming soon. So there's a new coming, coming soon under construction page. So if you have a new system, you just got Get Oiling and you're like, well, what I, what do I put on here? You can always put this up quick, nothing fancy and you can click in here and change the text if you'd like as well. So nothing, you know, nothing major, put a, put a picture in there, but it's just basically a quick template to get you started and on your way while you build out a whole site, or you can continue to use the built-in website theme as well. So, so yeah, those are, those are the updates. Hopefully this will help you narrow down and find page templates, you know, more quickly than you've been able to do before. So, yeah. Back to you Ashley. Looks like you're muted. Maybe. Yeah, you're still muted Ashley. Hopefully your internet is still around.
Yes, I'm still here. Sorry about that. I just have, I have compared to the, the screen that I normally have when I am at home. This is about like a quarter of the size of the monitor that I use. So I'm just trying to find Zoom so I can unmute myself. Awesome. Thank you guys for bearing with me. Hopefully you can see and hear everything now. How excited are we to get into creating the, the website that we want and the pages that we want? It's so much easier now when you've got all of that awesome navigation there and those additional templates. So again, I know Greg has put this out here before in our Facebook group or to our team directly, support@getoiling.com. If there are types of pages or examples of pages that you particularly love, would like to integrate into your site, share those examples with us so that we can add those to a growing list of inspirational templates for you to use that are easy for you to plug and play with. So getting back to today, attracting brand partners to your team. We are all here today because we're looking for brand partners. So I think this question is pretty well answered. But I have a question for you. Head over into the chat. Let us know. When did you decide to start sharing? At what point did you decide that telling other people about these products that you're using was something that you must do, must do? At what point? Was it after your first product experience? Was it several months later? Right? Was it many months later? Was it years later? Fascinating thing about this company and how brand partners are created, generally speaking, with this company is that you have, and this is not true for the majority of the rest of the direct sales industry. You guys need to know this. Young Living is incredibly unique in this aspect. You have infinitely more loyal customers than you have people that are out there trying to build a business. Right? And so there are so many people who are using products that like their product well enough, but that have not even thought about the opportunity to share yet. And we are going to talk about that, but I'm curious. Share your experience in the chat. Don't be shy. At what point did you decide that sharing was something that you must do? And this is difference, completely different question. When did you decide to treat sharing like a business? Is that something that's happened yet? Is it something that is a nice hobby for you? Or is this something that you are dedicating yourself to building and creating a business with? Because obviously we know that that is something that you can do and can do quite well, right? If you are treating this business the right way, so share that in the comments. All right. So let's talk about first, the number one key to attracting brand partners. And you may have heard this one before and it's something that you're going to hear a lot because it's true. If you want to attract people to what you do, you need to be out there being the best of what your product and opportunity offers. You are the beacon. You are the enticement. You are the reason why people say yes. You are the reason why people move forward, right? So this is just collect some ideas here. Start thinking about how you can go about creating yourself as an attractor. And the first way to do this is to use your product intentionally. And this doesn't mean that you're going to wake up today and post about the product that you're using. This doesn't have to be, you know, I need a post, therefore what product am I using? You could do something like that, but that does not create an intentional cycle of action. So what I want to encourage you to do is think about how you use your product on an intentional basis. And then collect your reflections on what it does for you. How many of you, maybe a quick show of hands, how many of you journal or log how you're using product? I'm doing this at this time of day. And then maybe you also journal, because we all ought to be journaling. What kind of changes are taking place for us? If you can't quantify or beautifully qualify the work that these products have done for you, the, the outcomes that taking and using and applying these products have produced in your life, you're going to have a little bit more of a difficult time sharing, right? Because then you're having to get into the facts and the explanations. Facts tell, stories sell, and your story is going to come from your observation of intentional use and reflection on what that's done for you. You're going to be able to articulate, right? So what I want you to do is kind of think about yourself as being an observational research scientist as it comes to your product use. Write down what you're using. Write down your intention. Why am I using this? And then over time, see how, if you rate yourself maybe on a scale of one to 10, I am taking Sleep Essence because I struggle falling asleep at night and I am going to take this every night, I'm going to take this many every night. And I'm going to do this for 14 days or 30 days, 60 days, what have you. And I'm going to, every time when I wake up, I'm going to rate my sleep. Or if you were a wearable, I'm going to look at my sleep score and you're going to look at that over time. That's just one example, right? So be intentional about how you use your product and start really collecting data on what that means for you, because that's going to help you craft stories that are compelling, that people will be inspired enough by to take action. And then you want to connect with what the opportunity to share Young Living is doing for your life and collect reflections on that. So you want to be a product of not just your products, right? That is the first thing that you want to make sure you're doing. You want to be a product of your products. But then you want to really reflect on what being a product of the opportunity is. Because the product that is Young Living, if you are a product of your product, you are a product of the wellness purpose and abundance that's available to you, right? So even if you are somebody who has just decided that you're going to begin sharing, you can say that what's, what this is doing for you is it's giving you hope and excitement. The aspiration that, that you now have in front of you to reach this goal rank, to reach this goal income, to reach this level of impact in sharing, that changes you. Before you have made your first share and received your first check, this can change you fundamentally. Reflect on that. This is very similar, you guys. If you, anybody have a gratitude practice? Show of hands, do you have a gratitude practice? Do you write down what you're grateful for every day? This is the same thing. If you're struggling with ways to connect, especially if you're struggling with your business or how you mentally or emotionally approach how you grow your business, start with the stuff that works in the rest of your life. Sit down and say, what is good here? What am I grateful for? How can I operate from that place? The law of attraction, if you're familiar with it, and there are, you know, many different books on this and sort of how it works. It begins with your gratitude. It begins with your heart and where you're coming from and the, the vibration that you are reflecting out to the world. So what does that look like for you in both product and opportunity? And get clear on that. Develop the language, collect the words, because those are your stories and those will make an enormous difference in getting yourself out there and getting people attracted to you. And then I want you to really make sure that you are building a bubble around your inspiration and your aspiration. I want you to really evaluate what you're exposing yourself to, because that lowers your frequency and your ability to attract, right? Or specifically your ability to attract intentionally. If you aren't working on attracting intentionally, you will attract anything and anything is not always the best of things, right? So you want to make sure that you're focusing on the language that you're using and the language that is showing up around you, right? So if everyone around you is complaining or is negative, that's going to impact the level that you are operating at, right? So really try to protect that inspiration and aspiration that you have, really elevating the energy that you are carrying, because our goal here is not just to improve our lives, but to inspire others to improve theirs, right? That is the goal, right? So if we are making sure that we aren't getting into the gossipy conversations or the, you know, the focus on complaining or on what's wrong, we look at the things that are working well, that we're grateful for and that we're looking forward to. And that really does kind of have an incredible ripple effect throughout our life. And then finally, and this is, this is really critical and it, again, it sounds really obvious. We got to do the work, right? If you want to attract brand partners and you specifically want to attract a brand partner into your business that's going to blow up a leg and take your business up the next three ranks with somebody working by your side that's doing great work, you've got to attract somebody who's on that level, which means you need to meet that level, right? If you aren't showing up excited and motivated and, you know, and as, as someone who has no time for negativity, you're not going to have somebody who wants to work alongside you. Who is that, right? They're looking for people who are vibing on that level. You got to make sure that you're there. So be motivated, be proof that it works, right? You don't have to do this whole business by yourself, but my philosophy was always this and it's always served me well in this business and in all of the coaching and consulting that has follows with, as followed for 15 years with folks who are in this industry. Assume that you are going to be the one to do all the work. Be that person who's going to step into those shoes and you'll be blown away at the people who say, hey, that's the person I want to be working with. And then you see your team grow, right? You don't motivate people. You are a motivator by proof of how you walk through life, by proof of the results that you get. So seek to be somebody who's getting results, because the people that you really want to be your brand partners, those are people who are already there and looking for someone like you. All right. Now that we've got our mindset figured out, we now need to talk about what it looks like to put yourself out there. Because if you're going to be that, you of course then need to be that in such a way that people can see who you are and what you're doing, right? Because we want to attract, that means we need to be visible. So the way that we do this is by sharing our life and inspiring others to believe in a better path for themselves. And this needs to be a guiding focus of how you live your life and how you put yourself out there. This is as much going to be true when you are walking down the street and meet a neighbor as it is when you are posting on Instagram, if that's where you show up online, as where you create a blog post or you speak in front of a group of people or you're out in your community. Your guiding focus needs to be that in order to help others see a better path for themselves, you must first be proof that there is a better path. Right? Understand that you are going to be the inspiration that causes people to take a leap of faith, right? And it's not a leap of faith to place an order and buy an oil. It is a leap of faith to decide that being a part of a movement and creating a better future with this opportunity, that's the leap of faith, right? And you need to be able to inspire that in others. So those reflections that you are gathering with your product use and your reflection on your gratitude for the opportunity, what it is currently and what it will be creating for you, use those to openly share your gratitude for what living this life and walking this path that you've chosen is doing for you. And again, this is something, this tool right here, this is available to you, whether you decided today that you're going to treat this like a business or you're someone who has been around for 20 years with this company or you're someone who felt knocked down over the last couple of years and you want to decide that the next year is going to be your best one. Everyone has access to this. Mine, those reflections, create the language, gather that language and start sharing that gratitude, all right? And look, this does not, and I think this is incredibly important, because a lot of us kind of fall into this trap of thinking that everything that we post, because we are so grateful for the product and the opportunity, that our identity and everything that we post online needs to be Young Living. And it doesn't. This does not have to explicitly mean that you're talking about product, money, or the Young Living name. For a long time, and this is again, it's a personal story for me, for a long time, me on social media, and when I got started in network marketing, I was a single mom of a two-year-old who had dropped out of college to have a family and I was broke. And I wasn't making, you know, I didn't have the car. I didn't have the, you know, the fancy house and the vacations. But you know what I had? I had time with my baby. Somebody else didn't have to raise my baby for me. I had time to cook food because I love cuisine and exploring the world through food. And so that's the kind of stuff that I posted. You would rarely ever see me posting anything about the product or the opportunity. But people were seeing a lifestyle that they resonated with and it worked, right? So this doesn't just have to be about, here's, you know, here's sulfur zyme and here's how sulfur is going to grow your hair, right? We're not infomercials. We want to really be reflecting on gratitude and leveling up what life can look like. Because people who are going to be your best brand partners are probably not people who are looking to become infomercials for Young Living or any other company, right? So that's not to say that you can't talk about it, but it's not the main thing, okay? Then we want to establish a habit of creating and sharing content. And again, not just promotion, because that can feel a little thirsty, but we want to regularly be in the habit of creating and sharing content. And remember, the purpose of sharing this content is to inspire others to believe in a better path for themselves, right? Your people who you are called to serve, showing them by proof of your life that theirs can be more joyful, more beautiful. You could have more time. You could do more of the things that you love, right? You want to create content for this. And so on a weekly basis, and if you've been around me for long, then you know that this is something that I ask everyone to do. You want to have some form of long-form content that you release on a weekly basis. This is substantive. This is something that really shows people that you aren't just somebody with a hobby, but somebody who really cares deeply about what you are talking about. And so what long-form content is, is a blog post, podcast episode or a YouTube video of, you know, greater than five minutes of length, okay? And then you want to syndicate your list. Now, if you don't know what that means, that's okay. If you have a list of people who have subscribed to hearing from you, and if you don't have one yet, that should be your next goal is to begin building a list. But for the people who have said, yes, I want to hear from you more, they're going to receive that long-form content. You're going to email them. Tell them about something amazing that's happened this week or something that's coming up. Give them a tip, give them inspiration. Give them some how-to and then share this piece of content with them, because that's why they said yes to hearing from you. If they like what you have to say. And then you do want to be showing up on social platforms, whichever one you prefer. It doesn't matter which one. It needs to be the ones that you resonate with most and where the people that you really mean to reach and connect with might be spending some of their time, right? And this just gives you visibility. Now, of course, this is the digital path, right? These are things that you want to make sure that you're living into in your community as well, right? If you want more people to come to your classes, these are all things that you want to consider doing, because they're not only going to give visibility to you and your brand, that you're building your personal brand, but they're also going to show people that you're not someone who's just here to sell them something, right? If you are offering in-person events, for instance, and the majority of what somebody sees you talking about on your profile are about Young Living products, they're probably just going to assume that whatever that event is, is going to pitch them Young Living and they figure they could just go to the website or they decide whether they want it or not. And then, you know, obviously that's going to impact how many people show up, right? And how well that goes. So do make sure regardless of how you plan to put yourself out there, that you are hitting on these three points. And then make sure that you are including opportunities in what you're putting out there to learn and celebrate and share the stories of other people who have transformed their lives with the opportunity and with product as well. Knowing other people's stories are just as important in a lot of cases as knowing your own, because you're able to share social proof. I don't just know that this works cousin that I'm sharing this with. Here is another person who's dealing with the same thing as you and here's what they did. And here's this person over here, right? And they got this opportunity. They did this thing. Here's this thing that's happened. So those are things that are going to do a lot for you as well. So definitely make sure that you are connecting and learning those stories. Now, the make or break factor in all of this is your posture. How you handle yourself and the way that you're communicating, the way that you're putting yourself out there, but especially what your one-on-one communication looks like can absolutely make or break, whether or not you are attracting brand partners or just wishing and hoping that someone might take this seriously, okay? So let's understand our posture first. You are a busy person, even if you're not, even if you're spending five hours a week on your business, it's totally fine. You get other things that you're doing, but oh my gosh, you would probably drop everything. If somebody was like, hey, does that thing that you do, does that make money, right? If somebody came up to you or reached out to you that was a member of, of your close-knit circle and was like, hey, you know what? I'm looking for a way to make some extra money. You would probably want to drop everything and say, uh, yeah, it does. Let's, let's talk about it right now. It does a this and a that and a this and a that, right? That is the exact opposite of what you want to do. Even if you actually do have open availability in your schedule, you need to operate as though you don't. Because that over availability can look and feel thirsty, just like, you know, putting a lot of promotional content out on your social media, for instance, can look and feel kind of thirsty. So you need to play just a tight bit hard to get. So if somebody does want to talk with you, suggest a time, right? How about tomorrow at two, something like that, right? And then when you are sharing, make sure that you always include some mention of opportunity. Always. We're not going to play God here and decide before somebody sees something that we're going to only talk about this, but not that. You never know what somebody needs to be blessed with in their life. So when you're sharing, if somebody says yes, right? When you're sharing, always include both. And one of the ways that I particularly love to position this is to take it off the table, right? So you can say, now look, this part, it, it might not be for you, but here, you, you should know about this, right? Go ahead and just kind of blow it off. Say, you know what? This, this part's probably not for you, but that's okay. Because when you tell them it's not for them, they're then going to begin constructing ideas in their head about how maybe it is for them. Because when you tell them it's not for them, they're then going to begin constructing ideas in their head about how maybe it is for them. Right? Uh, it's a fun little trick. So you can, um, always, always include. Both the opportunity to share and what that could look like as well as the product when you're sharing. Uh, but again, you're not pitching, right? You're sharing. This exists. I love this. You may or you may not. But this is fantastic for me. I, I think it can make a difference for you. Let's check it out, right? Now, once they have checked it out, once you have shown them, you're going to ask. A very clear set of questions, right? You're not going to say, what did you think? How was it? What do you think about that? Don't ask open-ended questions. You're going to ask pointed, specific questions. Such as, what did you like best? Health, wealth, or both, right? If you've shared a full presentation with them of what Young Living has to offer, you can say, what did you like best? This, that, or both. Most people are going to say both because wouldn't they love to have wellness and have. Wealth? Wouldn't they love to have the full scope of wellness, purpose, and abundance? Everybody. Is going to say yes to both, right? Except for those who are going to very clearly say, you know, I think I'm just interested in the product. And you could say, that's totally fine. You move ahead. You have a customer. But why would you not address this, right? What did you like best? Health, wealth, or both? And then remember, and I think that this is something that I, is, it, it feels, especially if we're newer. Uh, to this, it can feel a little uncomfortable. Putting ourselves out there because we know that there, for every article that is great about Young Living that's on the internet. There are twenty-seven that are awful, right? And so we just have this idea in our minds that people are going to perceive. What we do in some kind of poor way, because there have been some negative nellies that use this thing called negative SEO. And that doesn't, basically what negative SEO is, uh, is, is they are, they're targeting keywords. Like scam and, and icky words like that and trying to attach them to Young Living so that they can. Better position, whatever the thing is that they're selling, right? They have ulterior motives. What they're doing is, is they're doing for them. So the first thing that you need to do. Is remember that you could find a negative article about a ham sandwich on the internet if you looked hard enough for it. So if you take the posture of a professional and understand. That if you as a professional are out operating, out operating in the world, you are. Not going to be bothered with goofy questions about the geometric shape of your business model, okay? If you were a doctor, a lawyer, a realtor, you are trained in what you do, would you ever entertain such a goofy question? Well, you shouldn't either. And if you go in to your communications without fear. Of questions like this, then you won't be asked it. This is an important one to remember because again, and, and that's not just about the shape here. Um, you know, there are all kinds of crazy articles about Gary on the internet, right? And again, so many of the things like the content that's out there is there to serve the purpose. Of promoting someone else's business. It's ulterior motive, right? So just remember that that is what it is. Don't worry about this stuff. A lot of us are really affected by posture. Another thing that affects a lot of our posture, and I'm looking at you, if you've been with this company for more than three, four years. What has taken place in terms of internal drama? Whether that be in your team or Team Y L or things that happened. Uh, you know, during the last handful of years that the world went upside down. If you are guided by any kind of emotional, um. Drain or negativity based on those previous experiences or your concerns that someone might perceive something negatively. You're going to influence them subconsciously to perceive negatively, right? So go in with the posture of somebody who believes so deeply in the work that you do, who loves the work that you do so much. And you are going to really inspire people effectively to move forward, not just. With trying a product, but committing to a new path for themselves. And how wealthy they are in their health and how healthy they are in their wealth. Alright, so let's talk about. What I like to call the brand partner generator. This may wind up looking really familiar, uh, to some of you guys. Now. The reason why this would look familiar is because the best brand partners in Young Living. Are people who have seen life-changing results from product. That is the reason, this is the reason why Young Living is so different from every other network marketing company on this planet. People don't come in here and try to get rich quick. This is not a company that you can just get rich quick with. Now, I, obviously there are some people who have done extraordinary things. And in extraordinary periods of time. Is it possible? Yeah, sure. Yes. But most people who get started with this and build tremendous businesses, legacy businesses. That support them for decades. And I know you guys are on this call. Share your testimony in the comment. Let folks know. You've been with this company for twenty years and it's been producing. Life-supporting income for you for at least that long. The reason why you were able to do that. Is because you had an experience that wowed people. You could say, I used this and this happened to me. I used this and this changed for me. Your best bet at getting a great brand partner is getting a customer whose life has changed. Alright? Always ask people if they are interested in the opportunity when they hear about it. Always share the opportunity when you're sharing product. Because you could have people that say yes to brand partner from the start, but the best brand partners are going to be the people. Who believe in the product because they've used it and it's changed their life, alright? So how we go about generating is our brand partner generator. We're going to begin by creating the best possible outcomes for our customers. So that means we're going to communicate in a. In an intimate setting. We're going to be personally involved with our personally enrolled. So this means that if you are using Get Oiling, make sure that you don't just lump all of your customers into one group. And only just blast emails or post in a group as your only way of communicating. If you sign somebody up and then the only way they hear from you is in a gigantic email blast or a post in a, in a Facebook group or a vault. That's not the experience that is going to provide someone the best and fastest opportunity to get that outcome. That has them screaming from the rooftops about how amazing these products are, right? So make sure that you're providing a personal experience. You're reaching out one-on-one at least once a month and not just to tell them. That their order isn't big enough or that they ought to put this in their cart. Make sure that you are really clued into what their goal is. Because if you know what it is, you know how you can help them reach it more quickly. And the faster they can reach it. That's the faster they find their hero product, the thing they could never leave behind. So they're with us forever. And then, of course, that leads them to the change in themselves that they can't stop talking about. That their friends and family and neighbors notice about them, that shows them that they have no choice but to start sharing this because it's so amazing, right? So I want you to look at your relationship with your customers as that is of a wellness consultant. You are helping your customers reach goals with product. You're not trying to push new stuff onto them. You really want to focus in with that person on what matters the most to them. And that means that we have to go beyond just talking about what's in the gift with purchase this month. We really do have to make sure that we're not just talking about a sale or a promo. We want to know they're deciding to try some things because they found out that they. You know, are dealing with this issue. They found out that they're sensitive to fragrances and it's impacting their life in this way. And so we're going to begin with this plan and then we're going to move to the next one. And then maybe we find out. That they have a goal of sleeping better or losing some weight or whatever that might be. They've got problems that this company can solve. You can't just bet that whatever your mass blast communications are. Are going to help them solve those problems. You really want to make sure you're cultivating those relationships. And then your number one job as a brand partner, when someone signs up, is to keep them on track with those goals. And to help them find that hero product, that product that will never leave their, um, their, their loyalty order. So that they have a story that makes sense for them to share. Alright, you're going to make the best brand partners. By helping customers create the best outcomes. Alright, so let's get into some discussions, some life help. If you guys want to walk through anything together, I am now able to read. Your comments, uh, because I can't see them on the screen otherwise. Seen a lot of yeses here. Um, awesome. So let me see. Uh, Karen says, I obtained silver and six and been successful, such a god thing, such a blessing. Can't imagine life without having Young Living as a business. Yeah, y'all keep it coming here. This is, there are so many incredible stories that this company generates. Because at the core of it are products that change lives, right? There are so many network marketing opportunities out there that really are the reason why, like, there's, you know, kind of an iffy reputation in this industry. Of, of, of direct selling businesses. But man, you get companies like Young Living, or I don't know if there's another one like it. I don't think there is another one like it. And all the time. That I've worked in this space, I've never seen anything like this where you've got folks who will continue to order products for twenty years. Whether they are ever able to make a dime, right? And that tells you that you have a real thing and you as a brand partner have a real business because you've got people who love product that you can serve. Right? And if those people see big enough changes in their lives. That it's obvious, like sharing just happens. Did, did, did sharing happen for you guys spontaneously? Just show of hands? Like you woke up one day and you were like, oh my God, that stuff works. I know somebody who's been struggling. They, they've been talking to me about what they've been struggling with. They need to know about this too. And you weren't even thinking about, oh, well, if I shared with this person and then I put them here and they're there and like, you weren't thinking about the comp plan. You weren't thinking about how much money you'd make. You just go, oh my God, this could help this person. That's what we're creating here. And if you can create the best possible opportunity for somebody to. Experience that for themselves, you don't have to convince them or talk to them about a comp plan. They don't need to know how the money works. They just need to know that they want to change lives. And then you, you've got places you can plug them in. You don't have to be a guru of everything. Let me see. Let's see, for Canva, we actually have Bridget. Let me show you real quick inside of our system. Um, do I have, I don't actually have a screen open. Forgive me just a second. I'm going to log in over here. And I'll show you the answers to a couple of these questions that you guys have asked. Uh, Rosio asked if, um, Get Oiling is free or do you have to pay? The trainings that we do, like the one that you're on right now is free and congratulations on your four customers. And your goal to go gold or platinum by the end of next year. I'm so excited for you. So Get Oiling, uh, if you wanted to have a dashboard like the one we have here, and matter of fact, let me actually log into. And I'm not showing you my screen yet, because. I need to make sure that I'm in the right account. Here we go. So if you want to have a dashboard like this one. Then you are going to want to have a Get Oiling account. Uh, and that can be a seven dollar a month account if you want a seed plan and you, uh, and all of our features. Go to getoiling.com. You can look at our plans and features tab and, uh, learn more about, uh, our, our pricing. Uh, and what's included at each level. Uh, but these trainings that we offer on a weekly basis are always free. They're always going to be free for the community. So, um, you know, like what I've shared with you today, I think, uh, I, I hope sincerely. Uh, can bless you whether you are actively working with Get Oiling or not. Uh, and of course, if you are, I hope that this has really gained some insights for you into how, um, you can, you can use us to really grow. So let's take a quick look here. Uh, Bridget asked about, uh, Canva, uh, the Canva integration and Get Oiling and trainings for that. So actually, if you go over here to our Success Academy. We'll go over here to live training and replays. And you can actually type in the word Canva. And hit enter and it's actually going to take you to our YouTube channel. Where you can find lots of videos that talk about using Canvas. So. Uh, this is, uh, I think maybe our first one that we did, but maybe, yeah, yeah, it is. This, this is our very first Canva integration training. Uh, and then, of course, we have, uh, many others where we, we talk about Canva. Uh, in different ways, different ways to use it. So the Canva button you're going to find in a number of different places in our platform. But if you want to, um, check out those in-depth trainings, another thing that you can do is just click this little get help guy right here. You can type in Canva here as well. So here's our ad designs from Canva. And you've got a help article that you can also consult. Let me see if there are any other questions here. I'm scrolling up here in the chat. There's a lot here. Really, uh, really awesome to see all of these comments from you guys. So feel free to, uh, to keep those going. Alright, I do have a question here in the Q and A. Okay, Cornelia, hi. A, a bit off topic, that's totally fine. I see that you're also streaming, uh, into the Facebook group. When I'm having a Zoom call and record while streaming to YouTube, the quality of recording and the YouTube video suffers. Is there a tip you can share about settings to improve quality? I've never actually noticed a difference in quality. Um, when we're, we're streaming off to YouTube. Hmm, or sorry, when we're streaming to our Facebook group. I wonder Greg or actually Julie, Colin, you, you guys kind of know, um, I think you all know more than this kind of. This stuff that I do, um. Would, do you think that that might be a, like a local, like device, like memory? Thing or, um, like where, where you're, you know, we're broadcasting obviously to folks who are on this, this call. But if we were to add on, I'm going to stream this out to somewhere else. That is impacting the, you know, you're, you're utilizing more memory on the machine, right? So it might be a memory thing. That would be my guess. But I don't know. Have you guys heard or experienced anything like that?
I haven't, but I mean, streaming quality, uh, and Colin, maybe you've seen some other things too, but. If the streaming quality I've seen typically is with the bandwidth in your computer. So I, I'm not quite sure. I've never really looked into like, how does that work? When you do a Zoom and a live stream, you know, does that like double or triple the bandwidth you need? So it could be something like that, like if you can get to a wired connection instead of wifi. Or maybe, you know, if your home or whatever internet that you're on is a really low bandwidth, um, those might be a couple of things to do. I mean, you could try a different place, try a wired network. That would be my first suggestion. Maybe there's, you know, something to do with. Memory too, uh, or to say, I've never run into that personally, but I can, those might be some options.
Yeah. Okay, Rosio had some questions here, um. Let me see, how can I get customers to say yes to order their products? They say they have to wait. I need help on starting a group class of people that, okay, so, um. Where you have objections and we haven't done a lot of training on, on objections. Um, but generally speaking, where, where folks, uh, have been shown something. Uh, that, that could help them. They're either a yes now or they're a yes later, right? And so I think that the way that you manage, or they're, or they'll tell you that they're a no, right? If they're a yes and they didn't order today, they're a yes later, right? Um, and if they're a no today, they're not usually a no forever. So what I would remember, uh, just moving forward, Rosio, is to keep. Um, keep your, um, abundance hat on. Always, always be kind of operating in the mindset of abundance, meaning in this case. There are eight billion people on this planet and Young Living can reach most of them, right? So there are always going to be more people. And so for the folks who say, yes, I would love this. Uh, but I, but I can't do it right now. You want to just make sure you set a note for yourself and get their commitment. So you say, okay, when would you like to do this? Next Friday when you get paid? Okay, great. So how about we get together on, at six o'clock on Friday? Does that work for you? You put it on your calendar and then you hold them accountable to it and then you move on. And then they show up or they don't show up. They purchase or they don't purchase. Some will, some won't. So what? There are eight billion people and you have goals to reach. So don't focus too much on the actions of people who aren't keeping their word. Right? And, and try, and I know that, you know, these may be like friends and family for you, um, as is the case for, for most of us. Try not to allow your emotions to cross that barrier there. Because they're really choosing to make decisions for themselves or not make decisions for themselves. And you're providing them with the best possible opportunity that you can and they can do with it. Or they cannot. And you're going to love them either way and you got to let it go. So always be focusing on, um, who can I share with next? How can I share with more people? Um, and, and, and moving forward from there. Now. Getting started with Get Oiling and our seven dollar a month plan, if you are just getting started, you've only got a couple of customers. That's actually a fantastic place to start if you're not super techie, uh, and you want to stay on top of things, right? So let's just say, for instance, you, you've shared with your, your brother and you've shared with your cousin and you've shared with your neighbor. And all three of them think that this is great and could see themselves maybe using some products. But for whatever reason, they didn't purchase or set up an account when you, um, when you shared with them. What you want to make sure that you're doing is remembering to follow up with them in the future. All right? Now, when we first get started, we're keeping that all in here. And when we keep it all in here, we are limiting our ability to think creatively and to be organized and it's it's inhibiting our confidence. Right? So at the core of Get Oiling and why you want to get started with us, even at the seven dollar a month plan, if that's what's in your budget is you've got a contact manager. So that you can take the information. Here's my neighbor's name. Here's my brother's name. Here's my cousin's name. Here's what I shared with them. Here's when I shared with them and I just want to make sure that I touch base with them in a week. Right? And I want to remind myself that I'm gonna tell them they can go ahead and set up a free account. Right? And so then I put it there and I let the system remind me. Because if my cousin, it's gonna be in two weeks cuz they said they're gonna be gone. And then my neighbor, it's gonna be in four days. You don't have to keep it in your head, right? You have it in a system that's gonna remind you to do what you need to do when you need to do it. And that way, you don't have to just be focusing on the three people who aren't taking action. You can be focusing on getting out there and going to a networking event and gathering the names of twenty people who are motivated, you know, and and are maybe a little bit more ideal for your business. And now you can manage how you're communicating with twenty more people instead of worrying about, you know, the four that aren't doing anything, right? Does that make sense? And the more people that you can begin establishing those relationships with, whether that's in person or you're using social media, the more likely you are to find people who are ready to take action, who are going to do what they say they're going to do. Right? So um, yeah, if you want to learn more about classes, uh, we one hundred percent have on our YouTube channel. Uh, if you don't have a Get Oiling account. Um, quick tip, if you are on um a desktop browser, this is a little bit more tricky uh, on a um, on other types of browsers, but let's just say we want to look up uh, events. So I'm gonna search events here, but I'm gonna show you where it goes. It actually goes to YouTube. And there is a search feature on our YouTube channel. So if you aren't a Get Oiling community member yet and you want to explore some of the things that we have that we've talked about. Uh, there is this little search bar feature here. So if you go to, excuse me, if you go to youtube dot com slash Get Oiling, then you can actually see that there is a search bar here and you can type in uh, events. And it'll filter there for you. And you'll see that we have lots, lots and lots and lots of those um, of those trainings. Awesome. All right, last call here before we go for uh, for questions. Um, I'm gonna lower hands here, but if you had a question, uh, if your hand was up because you had a question, I know I asked you guys to raise your hands earlier, so they may have just been up. Um, but if you had a question, definitely make sure you pop those into the Q and A before we go. Um, Flo asks, um, is there an automatic link to Young Living updates, promos, catalogs, flipbooks, et cetera? Or do I need to put one on my site? So um, yes to, yes, and okay, so it's a lot of yes here. Uh, so Young Living's updates are typically published on their blog. For instance, uh, and you can import Young Living's RSS feed into your website so that you can have that appear if you wanted to. Um, their promos, that's always gonna be on their sites. Uh, but you could always link to their site, right? So um, I want to say the like the PV promo page or what is now the gift with purchase page. It's the same URL like for the US market, for example, and for every other market, there is a page that you can link to twenty four, seven, three, sixty five. But if somebody clicks that link, it's gonna go to the latest uh, gift with purchase or PV promo. Uh, so you can link to that from your website. And it's not something that you always have to update. Um, the the catalogs and and things like that are actually built into our built-in themes. Uh, and so when you get started with Young Living, and this does include the seven dollar level all the way up, all of our plan levels, we have built-in pre-built compatible or rather compliant website themes uh, that share Young Living and uh, and the product catalogs uh, are always the latest version are there on those as well. Let me see, Allison says, I have a page in my vault that has the promo link and the list in my events page link, so I don't have to change it. Yeah. That's the kind of thing that like, that's really, there are things that are your job and there are things that are Young Living's job. And most of your job where it comes to Young Living is to point to Young Living. Right? Most of your job period is to maintain a relationship with the people that you've introduced this to so that you can best point them to the places they need to go so that they can take their own actions on the Young Living site. And that, of course, would include checking out the catalog, the gift with purchase page, et cetera. And the out of stock list, absolutely. That's a great thing to have like inside of your vault. Where and that link is static too, in all markets. I've seen this for all kinds of markets um, where that link is the same. You could always just click it and send people there. And uh, and if that way you don't have to be the customer service, like when is this gonna come back in stock, et cetera? There is actually a place you can send them to go, again, pointing. Not being um, the originator of information or the repeater of information, but just being a directory. Rosia says, I have at least six potential customers, but they say after the holidays or no answer from Messenger. That's okay. You just want to make sure that you're making a note to touch base with them later. If they're not taking action, if they're not doing, you need to just go find people who are ready right now. Right? Uh, and if you're being organized in the way that you are connecting with people, then you can reach out to many, many more. And there's so much more training here um, on, you know, here on our channel and uh, and elsewhere in our system to help you really learn what it looks like to do that efficiently in a way that doesn't burn you out. Uh, and and you know, depending on how um, you know, how much you love talking with people. If you're a very blue personality, you could find this a very joyful and fun thing. But at the very least, if you are, you know, more reticent to have conversations and looking at you greens, uh, then you know, you're going to have more tools uh, to work with, more of a system so that you feel more confident moving through and kind of checking off the boxes. So lots of that here. Flo asks, can I put their links into my page and have them reflect my Young Living account for the referral? Oh, yes, not just that. So if you go to, if you get started with Get Oiling, whatever your web address is with Get Oiling, it could be custom or it could be get oiling dot com slash your name slash start. So yourname.com slash start, if it's on a good oiling platform, that's gonna go to your Young Living link. It's gonna send people straight to where they can get started. Um, you also have a really cool feature uh, inside of our platform that we call internally, we call this the leaf link. And um, yeah, I'll show you what that looks like. So maybe you're gonna publish a blog post. And in your blog post, you want to mention the um, the product that you've been using to get great sleep. Can you guys tell that like sleep is my thing and I absolutely use sleep essence? I talk about it all the time. Okay, so write post. And I forgot to remove my my help center prompt over here, so it's gonna pop back out. Um, all right, so here's our post. I want to go over to uh, I want to go over to the Young Living website. And I'm gonna go to the US one. And I'm going to go and find sleep essence. So once I get over here, I'm going to type sleep essence in the search bar. There it is. Now I am going to grab that link. So I'm actually going to, I'm clicking with two fingers on my trackpad. This will be a right click with a mouse. Or you could hold down if you're on a mobile device until it pops up the opportunity to copy the link. So I'm gonna copy the link. And I'm gonna head right over here. And uh, and maybe I even want to use a picture of this just to make sure people can see what I'm talking about. So in that case, I'm just gonna I'm gonna download this image as well. Again, this is a two finger click uh, on the photo on a trackpad or you could right click. Um, from a, and I'm using a computer that I never use. And for whatever reason, this this click is, it's not doing what I want it to. Okay. Well, let's just pretend that I did. Uh, I want to link uh, some text. And so maybe this blog post is going to be about uh, the three ways that I get, there's, why is that? It's just now popping up, the three ways that I uh, get uh, better sleep at night. Uh, and then here I want to actually talk about sleep essence. So the first thing that I'm going to do is I'm gonna go over here to more rich. I'm gonna look for um, wait, where is my leaf link? Why am I saying my leaf link here? Did this get moved?
I think it's on the far right.
Oh, it's this guy. More miscellaneous, sorry. Yeah, there we go. More miscellaneous is what we're looking for. It's a different place with three dots. You see three dots, three dots. All right. So the leaf link goes here. And then we paste. Here we go. So you can see this is a Young Living sleep essence product. And when I paste that in, it actually inserts automatically my sponsor and enroller number because when you sign up for Get Oiling, your sponsor and enroller or your sponsor number, your member number is uh, is one of the first things that we ask you for. Because lots of things in your system are going to point over to the Young Living site. So if I want to maybe turn this into a button, I can do that. Maybe I'll use this pink one and uh, make it cute with a name. So the text here will say get it now and update. And now this lives in my blog post. So when somebody clicks this, they go over here and they go to add it to their card or add it to their loyalty order. That person, if they're not a customer yet, they're going to sign up as your customer. Awesome. I don't know if any of you guys didn't know about the leaf link yet. I hope you're using it. Um, Rosio, I am definitely not an expert on the um, the different markets uh, that Young Living is in. Um, there are folks in this community who um, absolutely are building businesses uh, all over the globe. So if um, if you would like to maybe take that question to our Facebook group, I'm sure that there are some amazing community members there uh, who could, who could help you with that. Awesome. Uh, great. Well, thank you guys so much for all of your amazing questions, uh, for being the incredible people that you are. Uh, we will be back here again next week. I hope that you all have an incredible week and incredible holiday if you're celebrating. Uh, we're super grateful for you and I look forward to seeing you again very soon. Have a great week, everybody.